Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Okay, we need to order at six o'clock on 12:22 in the town hall upstairs. Thank you everybody for coming. Won't get to see some spaces here, Alan. Have you seen me go on? Okay. Adopt the agenda. We have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Any further discussion?
He had also mentioned in his email something about this furlong. And we have a couple of items that were suspended and advanced to the meeting about this furlong for eighteen then and also the zoning noise.
That can't go on any agenda because it was taken after. So I don't want to make that leave.
Okay, thank you. So we won't be discussing either about that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We have the, hello, Michelle. We have the minutes of April fourth meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? If there are not, if there are no additions or corrections, somebody make a motion to accept the minutes of April fourth as presented. Any other instructions? If not, all in favor, say aye or oppose. Okay. Now we got that a little bit. Okay, Dan, you're up.
So you have the truck bid there.
Maybe you want to come over this side so you can pick that little nice leather chair there, Danny, you can roll around.
Kim is getting the truck bid and they can keep it up there. So the spec on the truck, it is exactly what we put out the bid on, have bid on. Figure thirty thousand dollars shy of what we saved for the truck. I don't, we might be able to take and maybe not buy a pile of it with it this time around, wait a couple of years on that, do it later on, that'll save some off from it. There's a few things we could take off of the truck to bring the price down a little bit, but I'll have to rebid it. I went to ATG, which who does all the work on our trucks, that's whatever we don't do in the shop, and had them give an estimate on just to do a brake job on the truck that we still have because it's never been done. For them to do the springs and brakes on that truck. They already did one front wheel and spring on it already. They quoted a price a little over nine thousand dollars just to do that. But I don't see how you cannot trade it, get rid of it, because the warranty is completely off, pretty much out of that.
Well, the truth of the matter is whenever you put, if you held off for a year, any money you put into the truck will not get back.
Correct.
And the trade will be less. And the new truck will be more.
Correct.
I think that's how I look at it.
Yeah. That's fine.
As a member of the capital budget committee, I would recommend approving this bid based on what I've talked with Danny. And we actually have in the capital budget for equipment right now, at the end of this coming year, we'll have four hundred and four thousand dollars. And this would be a hundred and seventy-five million dollars plus twenty-three for the excavator. So that's where we would stand. And of course, going forward, we'll have to see how the other vehicles that we have in our plan in the future, what they're going to cost. But I think now is the time to get this one. And hopefully in a few years, we'll have a recession and maybe the prices will come down.
I think right now, after this vehicle, we have a two-year cycle with nothing else left, right?
Yes.
Then it is like.
And then it's the big enchilada and everything decides whether we can do the whole enchilada.
So with that said, Hardy, are you suggesting that we do the entire, entirely equipped truck as it was originally bid? Or are you suggesting we need to?
I would defer to Danny on that. And if he feels we should, I would say do it. And if he feels we don't need to, I would.
I would like to see a motion on what was bid. So because if we, if you do it different than that, we'd have to rebid, which the price of the truck will automatically already go up. Because that, that bid includes a serial number on a truck that will be built. So as soon as you, you don't have to put it up to a new bid, it'd be a different serial number, which already kicks in the new pricing. So we can take that bid and I'm pretty sure they let us do in the past where we can back out of maybe the plow or something like that to save a little money.
Will we lose our place in line if we have to redo the bid?
Yes. You would, the truck that we bid is an old model, so it's a brand-new truck, but it's, it looks just like the trucks that we have now, the forty-seven-hundred S F models. Those, this, they're pretty much, they're fading them now and they're making a new model, which is a forty-seven-hundred E. And so the prices will go up with all the new emissions and everything of them trucks. So they're kind of building, I would take it kind of like leftover trucks out of what they have. So we have the identical model that we already have. If you, if you was on bid, then you start all over basically. The reason they let us put a name on it is because it's nothing, this town truck is the same as every other town around. It's how they're all specking them. So like he said, if you guys end up saying no, he doesn't want it, it's not like he's got a truck being built, which hasn't even started to be built yet, that he couldn't get rid of, because the next town will just take it. You know, we, most towns, they only couple trucks, tell the difference that they're all running. And so he just lets out to the next town that's waiting.
Someone want to make a motion? Still phone here?
Have we seen the minute before this bid amount?
Well, the bid was the last meeting.
We just opened the dialogue. I knew it was in it.
Should be, should be, should be a good minute, isn't it?
John has it.
Two hundred and thirty-three thousand. That's the trade. That's four and gave eleven thousand change, right? The good price is a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Yeah, that's what's, that's what it is.
Not something you want to say.
Well, we need a motion to. Now, now that we've got a motion, we can still have discussion. Is there any more discussion?
This was in the capital plan?
It's thirty thousand dollars over, but we have the money, yes.
Unfortunately, I think you have to do it, right?
I think so.
Do we need the plow, Danny, or are you?
I am willing to wait on a plow. The plow is on Mike's truck. We were not letting it go because it's, was traded the last time out. So we're selling one of the older piles with it. If we have to wait a couple of years and see if the prices come down, that's what we're doing.
Is that your recommendation?
I would. Plows, I think the plow is roughly around eight thousand dollars.
So the bid, so the bid should then be changed so that it reflects the truck without the plow?
I won't change anything. We're just back out. As soon as you, if you change that.
No, we'll do the motion.
I would just leave it at that and we'll see how much I take out of the price. But that, I know, I'm pretty sure they'll let us take that out on the exact price of the plow.
Okay.
That and might be a few other things in there that we might really take out. They ran a line this side of the bodies now, you know, stuff like that, but I don't know how much they're going to deduct off of them.
Any other discussion? Danny, so we have the bid there, so we need that we purchase the truck for two hundred and a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Wendy's doing it, yeah. Wendy's got it, perhaps.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. I guess you guys, Danny, you want to bid that, right? Do we have to sign this or anything? Did Bill sign it or has acceptance? There's no signature, right?
I don't think there is anything on there.
I don't see anything. I don't see.
I think once we call them and tell them that we've ordered the bid, you want them to send out another packet where you were signed up.
Okay, all right. FEMA?
I know Katie ended up coming down today to meet with Michelle on some clarification on how the stock files were working during flood stuff. I think Michelle said it all went really well.
Yep, she was there in maybe twenty minutes.
That she is ready to start submitting the projects, but we, Michelle told us we'd like to see some copies before she starts to submit that stuff. So I think even once she submits it, we still have the right to say yes or no or agree with her. But it's just easier if we agree before it's submitted in.
If you're going to send a copy down to us so we can just go over it first before you submit it, right?
Yeah, I believe it might possibly be here already. It sounded like maybe tomorrow I was going to have to look at it. Though I was going to swing in tomorrow morning and see if it was here in the email. But that would be, I think, everything, all the projects that was done. So it's been a long wait, but it's not like one, it's one road at a time. It's going to be everything that we spend all at once with the FEMA target. The bid aid part for one twenty-one East and West. I know Michelle was scanning all that stuff for Bill today so it could be sent to Megan.
She got it done.
Yeah, so that's all done and be sent out. That numbers all come out pretty close to what distance we're. So I want that between FEMA and the FED too.
We have an excess wait for P and L Trucking.
Yep.
We'll need a motion to accept that and have Bill sign it. So somebody want to make that motion? Do we have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Danny, you have anything else?
Yes. On the gravel? Just wondering, are you going to be putting gravel up to bid this year? Are you doing it the same way we have in the past, buy this wire from wherever needed for the right price or in sand? Are we bidding that out this year or are we doing it for that?
Can we still get sand at P and L?
We will be the only town to get sand if we decide to buck over. The prices are still really good, being close. If we want a truck then it's four fifty a yard. He deals with the trucks. We just pay him. Then add the sand and he has got a little bit of gravel left, natural gravel in the pit that's left to crush. And if, I'd like to go buy a two thousand yards of it from him. So I want to know before we put prices out there if we're going to bid or not on this stuff.
You need more than the two thousand yards?
It's all we really have budget enough for. The budget will leave just a little bit left for, as you carry a small amount through for mud season, when it's enough.
Is this gravel the same price as last year?
It went up by, I think, twenty-five cents.
And sand, like then?
Sand went up a little bit too. You know, if it's twenty-five or fifty cents, but still, still cheaper than anywhere else on sand.
Yeah, maybe they're cheaper in places.
And the further you go, the more gas.
So do we need a motion or do you just say it okay?
No, as long as we're not putting it out to bid, then I know we're not telling them to secure the two thousand yards and that would take, I think I based on roughly four thousand yards of sand to do it.
Okay, is anybody okay with that? Okay. What else, Danny? And how the, how the dirt roads have we already covered yet?
Eastman is a little, has a few wet spots, but not too bad. That's pretty much the only one that's left that's got some good ruts in it. Westman looking pretty good. We graded a lot, get a lot more to do. We started putting in some cohorts. Found out that there's still frost in the ground in places, only down two feet, you still get the frost. But we had a cohort up on Hallowell Road going up to State Park that froze up and crashy claps this winter. So we did that on Friday, Mike and David did. So that one's in. And we started cutting trees on Pinkberry Grove, or we did the corner. We're going to hold off on cohorts until we know the rest of the frost is out. So we'll be just ditching.
Maybe by June. Maybe by June.
Hopefully we don't get snow tonight, end of the week, mostly to be out.
Could you finish your cutting on day twelve?
No. Mud season stopped, we stopped cutting out there. That is an act. We just worked in between projects throughout the summer.
And so you still pick up some grain, right?
Oh, yeah.
Anybody have anything else, Danny? Yeah, okay, that's Danny. The next item is the Women's Foundation liquor license for the cheese shop. Who has the original?
I have the original. Everybody got a copy. This is a brand-new second-class request. They've gone through the DLC Department of Liquor Control, filled out their application. They want to open up and sell wines and liquors over the cheese shop. So I got the original. It just requests the chairs of the select board. If you will, what we need is a motion for you to adopt, to agree to authorize them to get a second-class liquor license.
Okay, so somebody want to make that motion?
Oh, actually, it's not just the chair, I'm sorry. It's all.
No, it's all five.
Or all four, I believe, because I think Suzanne is marked on here as being affiliated with them, so it should probably be the four.
Well, the question is that Suzanne, was it, she was told that there might be a conflict and she said there is no conflict for the other liquor, you have the licenses. So I don't know if you.
If it's stated on here, then I don't know. If it is stated and I'm an affiliate, then I think that I.
No, but if there is a language in here, it says, where's the language?
It's on page three. It just states Suzanne's name. There's, do any of the applicants have an elective and appointment state? Yes, please indicate.
I see it.
Top, kind of to the top of the third page.
Yeah.
I read this before. So I don't know. Oh, yeah, it's right there. Okay, yeah. Okay, so.
I think Mr. Chair, just for the, for the, for the ball's appointed on this application, I'll choose to refuse myself.
So all in favor? Of the liquor license, say aye.
There was a motion, but no second. I didn't hear a second.
Oh. Somebody seconded that call.
I'll second.
Okay, Kathy seconded. So. You second? You made a motion?
Yeah.
Right. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, so pass the original round and we'll sign that. The next item, and I would hope that we don't have a lot of discussion. The attorney has recommended that we approve this amendment to the lease for the school building. So this is the next item. So someone make a motion to accept the amendment of the lease?
Summon.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
We're going to ask if we have any discussion, but it's really kind of straightforward. So if there is no discussion.
So what Bill requested, that a motion be made to approve the lease amendment?
And have the chair sign.
And we adopt the amendment and authorize the chair.
Yeah, yeah.
So adopt and.
Can it be in the same motion?
He made it sound like a motion to approve the lease amendment and a motion to adopt the amendment and authorize the chair.
Right, yeah.
So I think the motion that I just made was to approve the amendment.
Yeah, all you have to do is just say to adopt, I guess. That type of chair sign, is that the only other?
That would be the next motion.
Okay, is that okay?
I think Kim just said that would be the second motion.
Oh, we want two motions.
He wants two motions.
Oh, okay. So let's leave the first one, that we approved the lease. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Now the second one is.
To adopt it and then authorize you to sign it.
Okay. Somebody make that motion?
I move that.
Okay, Kathy, someone second. Any other discussion? Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. You have the original there, right?
Yeah, if I don't, if there's any changes, I just see them take the one you gave me.
Yeah, I will see. Okay. No, no, Kathy, she, she's. She's to choose herself.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Here, we do confirm, okay. You on? Can you have anything?
I have a couple of things. The first thing I want to just state that for the first time since I've been here seventeen years, we have no delinquent taxes listed, thanks to Michelle.
That's amazing.
She's done an awesome job.
First time, I've been here a long time, right? It's never, ever, ever.
Zero balance for one month at least. Next payment is, final payment's due this May, so we'll see who's going to fall after that. Next tax payment is due May sixteenth, rather than the fifteen, fifty falls on a Sunday. So everybody is due by the sixteenth, no postmark anymore. After that, it's eight percent. The other, and I don't know, I'd like a motion on this, even though it's under other. In the past, every year, when you file your in contact, your state in contact, you're supposed to apply also for an HS one twenty-two, declares homestead, and an HI one forty-four, which gives you the rebate on the state. If you do not file on time as of April fifteenth, everybody is subject to a penalty. You can still get the rebate, but you get a penalty. Penalty goes to this, to the town. Their standard is eight percent. And that eight percent will go to the town. Or the select board could choose to waive all penalties. So when we file our taxes, when we claim our taxes in July for everybody in the town, there is a box that I can check off that says to waive it or to leave it. So it's up to the board to make that decision. And a motion, if you want to leave the penalty on or waive it for your taxpayers.
Do you have a view on this?
We waived it in the past when the state was flip-flopping about how people should file, whether it should be on a yearly basis. Then they went, no, you don't have to file this year. So because of the confusion, and this was probably six or seven years ago, we would waive. But now it's been across the board, April fifteenth, you need to do this. Yes, there's been probably four or five people, you know, that have gotten caught in there. In the past, the last three years, you guys just let us leave the penalty. So I have to do this every year and ask you how you want.
I'd like to see it waived.
Yeah, sort of.
People have hard enough time paying their taxes as it is with.
It's hard to understand.
Well, sometimes too, if you have a payer doing your taxes and they are neglectful or forget or whatever, and you're not on top of them, and that can, you can fall through the cracks.
You can also reduce it from the eight percent too and bring it down. So you can pick a percentage too, I believe.
Pardon?
I believe there are quite a few people that probably haven't made the April fifteenth date, so I would recommend you wait it too. You know, people who get their taxes filed by outside agencies, quite often they'll get it done by April fifteenth. And I don't think you should penalize those people because their tax, what they're like.
I agree. Also, the people pay their federal income tax that extra day away because patrons stay and they, so you're all in the slot of the market while people are filing today as opposed to Saturday or whatever.
Today was the deadline.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but it says fifteen.
Also, some people are on extension.
Yeah.
So you have, you don't have to pay your taxes, but you still have to file the.
Right.
And that, that could be somewhat of a confusing thing as well.
Yes, which said they don't make it easy to understand.
No, they don't make it easy.
So somebody want to make a motion after you waive the penalty?
I'll make a motion to believe that the town loses the penalty, penalty for filing homestead people.
No second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Kim, do you have anything else?
No, that's all we have.
Sure.
Yep.
What about the, what about the incident, you know, with the dog and the cops? Do you do any further research with that?
Yes, and that's all.
And maybe the, some of the board members don't know, you might want to explain. Because we had that bill for about twelve hundred dollars or something.
Well, that hasn't been resolved yet, yes. The Sheriff's Department, between two health visits and another dog issue, unlicensed dog, we got a bill for nineteen hundred dollars from the Sheriff's Department for their services. Bill and I did talk to Mark Anderson. He's, he's taken another look. I wanted more detail on what invoice they sent because there really wasn't any names or dates, just dates is all there was, and hours. He was going to give me more details when we went through his records and it would be reduced. They're having a hard time in their billing department because this is such a new program, the animal control. It's a, it's a brand-new program to them and there's a few towns, Guilford is about ready to sign onto them. So we talked to them a little bit. He brought a figure of about twenty-two hundred dollars it would cost us to have an animal control officer cover us for a complete year. And that would be services that we could call at any time. They'll take over dog license, dogs that are unlicensed, dogs that need to be licensed, dog bites, most all dog complaints, taking dogs to the towns. The only thing they've done is like a nuisance of a dog barking. If there's a rabid animal, the citizens would actually call the animal control. And even if it's like a stunk and it's not an actual dog, they would, they would then contact the forest department and they would come, the forest rangers, and they would take care of it. So there isn't any real middleman in there. So right now, their attorney has drawn up a contract for us to take a look at, to take on their services. We've talked to Mike. Mike's fine with the whole thing, like Waysville, our constable. Talked to Rich. Rich thought it was a pretty good idea.
Well, was that more like a retainer or was that the actual?
Supposedly that's the actual. And that's why I want to see the contract.
I think we should see the contract.
Because, I mean, it's just like nineteen compared to what you want.
Right, exactly.
For one incident, but supposedly.
Maybe they put the nineteen hundred toward the contract. I mean, Kim, in your experience, do we have nearly two hundred dollars worth of this kind of activity on a monthly basis?
No.
And, you know, I don't think we're quite satisfied with the return we get on the four hundred fifty dollars we spend every month with the sheriff anyway. So maybe this gives us an opportunity to really have some good negotiation with the sheriff about what value the town gets.
And the prices that they guarantee too is, they prorate it with the population of the town, the size of the town, and how many are enrolled. The more they get enrolled, the easier it is for the rest of the towns to join. I'm thinking, after the few incidents we've had in the last three weeks, I think it would be, it would be great to have it, that service.
Things are changing in town and they get more and more of this happening. So it's something we need to take a look at. And I just want Kim to explain it so everybody would understand.
That's great. I agree with Rich. I think we ought to take a look at the, I think we ought to take a look at the contract. And you know, the, the dog issue is starting to be a bit of a buzz in town anyway. So maybe just also presents an opportunity for us to talk about that as well.
Anything else, Kim?
No.
Okay. Peter, Mark, Cooperman, John, I know you have something.
Yeah, this is kind of Bill's thing, but he's here tonight, so I will try to explain as much as I know who you are. Kind of come out of nowhere. We had a development meeting on Bob Blunden's pole bar, and his engineer was here, was Morris Root, I think his name was. And somewhere during the night, talking about different things, we mentioned that we were looking maybe for an engineer for a project here in town. And he asked where it was, and that was it. Nothing else happened. Well, the next morning, we got back from him, two-page email of what he'd done that night on that Cooperman's project up here. And he went into quite detail. And what he came up with at that time was that the culvert that goes across middle town was making the water go faster, and that was some of the problem there. But he would like to go and do some more research on it, and up to this point now, it didn't cost nothing. He did this for nothing. But to go further, he would like a video taken of Pinkley Brook, and he would like to see that video, and then he would come up with a price of how much it would cost to determine what, you know, do the engineer that, about that. And so we contacted the landowners, Dorothy and Pat, and asked them if we could go on their land to take the video. And then we stopped. We haven't gone any further. That's why it's here. Bill and myself would like permission from the board to go that one step further, not spend any money, just to make the video and have him propose what it would cost to do the rest. He was, I questioned it when he was doing the project out here. I didn't think he was any good at all. And he was very good in his presentation of, you know, not being an ass, so if we could get your approval, we would continue along with it. And I'd like Rich to jump back into it, to let you out of it.
No, I would like to.
It was just something that happened all of a sudden, and I think that maybe some solutions to your problem with that. And the other thing I mentioned, I wanted you and Dorothy or any other landowners involved from the beginning when we take the video. So, and that's the worst. Well, that's my opinion.
I think it's a no-brainer.
Yep.
So, I mean.
An opportunity.
So do we need a motion here or just an okay? How do you feel?
Well, we're not going to spend any money. We'll come back again when we find out how much it is, and maybe you want to make a motion for it.
Yeah, so the consensus of the board is to proceed with the video and go on the land?
And John, you said that Patrick and Dottie said it was okay to go on there.
Yes.
And when you think about taking it into consideration, other landowners, are you thinking about others who have filed?
I don't know. There really isn't any other landowners right in that area that are close to it.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful opportunity.
And they both expressed interest that they would like to be involved with that. I think it's a good idea.
Well, I just, in the minutes, I would just, you know, let it know that it's okay.
Consent, sure.
Anything else? Pat, you have anything?
No, I'm not.
Pat?
Great.
Dottie, you have anything?
We want to have an opportunity to get dressed up for that video.
Okay, move the committee reports. John, it's nothing like senators, right? I did do the.
The only thing, I tried to contact Iwar.
I talked to Iwar, and he said they're going to start this month.
Well, it's supposed to start April 3rd.
Well, yeah, but.
I mean, we're in the third week of April, so, and I couldn't find it today, and I was going to ask him to be there.
Well, you know, I don't fuck with that one.
I do know that, I've had a couple requests already. Austin's been in my office twice for selling lots and arranging a couple of burials that I've let, and then had to say no to contact Austin directly, gave those, contacted those. So everybody's really happy and on the same page.
Good. And this year, we harvested all the flags, and they're stored in a plastic box at the town garage, so that we won't have to buy so many flags this year. Some of, most of the flags are in very good shapes. Hi, Greg?
I don't have anything. I've not heard any more on the right of ways, so I don't. A little minute, I don't have any.
Well, I know the parks committee's here because they're here in full force, so go ahead. Who's ever going to be the lead here?
Well, three of us are here. I'll start out, just wanted to give a quick update. In the, after the completion of logging in the park proper, the three of us have walked all of the trails, made sure that there are any logging debris, any brush, any other spring cleanup items. Our objective is to get the park open for public use as soon as possible. The things that we have left to do, a lot of the marked trees came down as part of the logging process or are missing the metal tags. We were in the process of switching over from nail tags to painted blazes, and with the warmer weather, we'll be able to get out and finish remarking all of the existing trails that are in the map for the park. The logging activity that will be, or the longer activity, I know that Alan Portress, he was in the park on Friday, and went through with that, the exit conditions that are contractually obligated. But in general, the trails in the park are cleared. We'll remark them in the next two, three weeks, and then the impression of what we can, you know, safely get everyone back in, take the trail's closed sign down. As far as, just in general communicating that, we'd like to have an article in the May, Draft and News, that updates whoever knows what the status of the park is during the spring weather. There was a summary that Tim Morton had provided to Bill, and I think from shared in the town. It's our volunteer recommendation that that information be made available, perhaps in the context of the Draft and News article, and we're ready to draft something, which makes a lot for this meeting and our meeting, just to, you know, get more information before we perhaps suggest that. And then quickly on the recreational trail program, which is our next attempt to solicit outside funding for some of the things we want to do. The full application has not been released yet. We've been kind of combing at some things that'll get us primed, but I think it's premature to discuss it in detail. However, since it's a federally funded grant, different than the state grants that we applied for last year, it's a cost-share grant. There's twenty percent cost share, which can be cash or working time. The maximum grant amount is $30,000, which we'll have no problem adding up to. But because it's a reimbursement grant, the money for the total project cost has to be evidenced by the applicant. In this case, we'd have to show that we could put out up to $36,000 in this case, prior to being reimbursed against invoice. What we don't know is whether we can get progress invoices or whether the project has been completed with the full amount before we can get reimbursed. Those details, we expect to verify once the application is out and we get a chance to look through the details. I think, what we're just like to say, we would like to try and get together with the Parks Subcommittee at some point in the next two, three weeks, to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what the RTP grant application entails, and can discuss in detail, so we know exactly what, you know, the select board, what we would ask the select board through the Parks Committee to approve, so that we can pursue that grant.
That's fine. Just give us some notice when we want to have a meeting.
Sure.
And there is, you know, there is $17,500 in the parks account, so there's money there to pay if we have to, if you get the award, and the town share, and obviously, some of it would be in kind, I guess.
Yes. It would be our intention that they will value in kind. Nothing that we've already done can be counted towards the contribution to the grant. But I should just thank you. One of the things that we anticipate when the park reopens for walking is it will only be walking up of Parkview Road. We want to keep the parking area and the access road clear, but the traffic is too soft up in there, but we would hope that some of that money might be allocated through some of the gravel and completion of the parking areas that can be made available, understanding that the priorities that Dan is working for doesn't make it, you know, imminent, but we'd like to at least have it in the work plan if opportunity comes up to do so with that.
I mean, I can't speak for the board, but I mean, I'm sure that they can express their opinions, and to me, the money is there to be used for the park, so I guess it'd be, you know, I don't know how much gravel was needed, and what the costs are going to be, but that'd be something you can determine.
Yeah, so how are you going to do that? Just figure out the cost of the materials or are we figuring as if it was a project with the man, hours and everything, equipment hours, or just materials?
I think just, I don't know, just materials, I would think, but that's for me.
If you guys want to meet up there sometime, we can mark out the size, because I know it looks huge here now. I don't think that was their original intent for the parking lot to be that big. So we can mark that out, and I can figure out, Gary, and you guys might hear roughly on what that would cost.
That's fine. You want to talk about the meeting on Friday?
Well, before I do that, if we were, if we were to get successful on the grant, we envision the work, which won't be until next season, not this summer, two, one, three, one, two, three, around this time. But we envision the materials for that work coming to that parking lot. So in the sequence of events, to have that parking lot rattle, so that other trucks bringing in sure pack or materials, if we get to build the lead to, those sorts of things, that's kind of important in our plan if we get the grant. But as far as the meeting Friday, I met with Tim Morton, the forester, and Mike King, who's an operations person for Longview, and the operator that will run that escalator and do the work. We walked all the trails. We identified all the areas that Tim wanted, water bars, or some of them will be water bars, some of them will just be a spot to collect water, just to slow it down. But we went through with all of that, and it was really good to have an operator there so he could see what Tim wanted. He flagged it. It may not help that I happen to know the operator. I said, well, you know, when you come and do this, if you let me know, I'll bring my saw and cut stuff. I'd rather have you work in the machine and not getting off rather than the chainsaw. On the saw, you can be more efficient with your machine, so that's the plan for that. They looked at, they evaluated how much moisture's in the soil currently, and they think, you know, it's a guess based on what the weather's going to do in the next little bit, but that as it's dried so far, they're looking at giving it another two, maybe three weeks of drying before they come in. And then they estimate two days to do all the work that they want to do, which is part of the contract of sale in order for them to get their bond back. So I think that all lines up well with getting that, assuming the weather calms, getting that done, so that we can open part of the memorial there. I think so. What's your take?
Yes.
Do you think anybody have any questions? Eleanor, Mike?
We go so far as to predict that it might be open on Memorial Day in the Draft and News article, or are we holding off on that a little bit?
We debated a bit about Sudan, and if the park, or if the logging restoration can't be completed, you know, we won't know exactly when, but we're kind of thinking that we would like to have it open, even if we have to, you know, walk in and fly people off for a couple days while the operators in there. But we're just going to kind of wait, and I think we'll just.
Yeah. I think so.
We'll suggest something. It would be great to be able to do that, but whether we open it and close it again, or just it gets a little bit complicated.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions for the committee?
Thank you. Well, your work.
Yeah, it's great. Okay, personnel committee, is there anything?
I think Monday we're setting up appointments for reviews, quarterly reviews with Phil and Danny, and possibly on.
You're thinking of the.
The comp times and overtime with Kim, and then you could possibly with Michelle on Monday.
Who's going to do the building?
I have a little blurb here. We had Brent come in last Friday to meet with Bill and I, and he went out back with Bill. Brent did mark on the side of the wall for the disconnects. So then Bill emailed Gus, and Gus said he'd try and make it in late this week, by the end of the week. And that'll fit into Brent's schedule. He has some, he comes, but he doesn't have them all. But he could, if he really wanted to, after Augustus' disconnects, he could hook up this one here and one for the post office. He would like to do them all three at the same time, but if he wanted two of them hooked up right off, he could work on getting, trying to get that done.
Was there an indication whether the other one would be?
It could be about three more weeks for the others, so. So Bill made it sound like it would be nice if we could get this one and the post office at least done and taken care of after the disconnect.
You thought it was a modded.
I don't think so. He's just, you know, the visitors do that all the time.
It'd be nice to get the lease of post office started up here.
I think it'd be good to get it done. We never know what things are going to happen these days.
Yeah. Do it now, in case something happens three weeks from now.
Well.
We have an agreement here that you'll be happy of, this is an agreement, you're bringing up power to do the underground for the upgrade of the service for the town hall that needs to be approved. You all have to sign this, a little wonderful thing.
I've received and reported already the easement deed from Green Mountain Power to the Wyndham Foundation, and the Wyndham Foundation gave to Green Mountain Powers. Then Bill then did one from Wyndham Foundation to the Towne Grafton to come across. So those both have already been recorded and filed and taken care of. So now it's just a matter of signing the agreement at $5,346.98.
Do you need a motion?
We do.
I've said that.
Okay. Any other discussions?
Now, just, Kim, just refresh my memory. Is this cost going to be associated with the building projects, if it becomes by art of funding?
Yes. Bill says, yes, we'll just include that in with the odd book, because it's kind of one of the driving forces why we need it, even though we've needed it for quite a few years. It's been recommended, but we just haven't done it.
You have the original?
Yep.
All right, so if we have no other discussions, all in favor?
I just wanted to add, when GMP came, he scoped out where it was going to be hooked up, and he was very, very thorough, and I think he came back, right?
Yep, he's been back twice now, actually, with the dudes, with the easements. And he also was here when Russell was here, so I think Russell will probably do the digging, and he's familiar with what lines are there of the Wyndham Foundation's too.
So he's done a lot.
So need a motion. So we have a motion. So we have the motion. So any, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Waste water, uh, Bill and I spent, uh, oh, half an hour, 45 minutes with, uh, with that. Um, there's more paperwork we would have, that had to be done. And so we, you've got that all resolved and it's, the, the, the contract for Time Bond has to match the contract with the, the state or the feds. And, uh, so we went over that and there were some corrections there. And so only thing I can tell you that it's moving along. And, um, she's, um, Time Bond said that, uh, they're hoping to get started. Um, it shows all the paperwork has been, been filed. So that's where that stands. We got, we got that in our, I think. Okay, Bill? Yes?
Just a clarification. Under the Parks Committee on the agenda, it says, John Gregory's going to talk about drainage. Is that the drainage that you've already talked about? Or was there something specific to the park? Did that drainage discussion just get put in the wrong place on the agenda?
No, it didn't. I didn't bring anything up on it because I just went over it when you said that Longview and them were coming back and fixing everything up there. Because I've been concerned all winter because it's going to be more water come out of the old entrance of the town park than it ever has come out of there. And it came down and created a pond behind the church. Water went in the church. It overflowed, it went down and went down the backways like that, which hasn't done for a long time. And I, I walked up there, took a look, and Danny went up to Mike and I talked with Dan and Kevin and told him, oh, we're going to put in some water wires, stuff like that. That was the only thing.
Um, we looked specifically for that when we were there and I'm going to comment on this. There's places you can see on, on the skid roads where water moved during that storm. But you don't see a steady path of it from there and down to that area that you're talking about. You know, you see it go and then it'll kind of spread out and filter out. Um, I think, I mean, obviously there's a lot of company and, and you want, they didn't have water bars in any other way, first. But I don't think the whole issue is that. I think some of it is that ditch that we have on the uphill side of the road in the parking area, the access road in the parking area. So I think part of the gravel would also include, uh, kind of that finished grading of the parking lot, which we may be also able to make some improvements in waterfall at that time. So I, I think the two things need to be done, but definitely that's going to get that one done by Longview. As long as we, as long as when we're doing this, Danny, you know, the parking lot, that we make sure that the water is going where it's supposed to be going now.
There's one more, one more crossing, core crossing to go in, but we waited until August is done. Now we'll get half of the water that's up there.
I just, I just think it's important that we keep track of that.
Well, all the water comes down, always has come down. Right now it's just, it's all coming in one spot. So once the coves put in and they get their water wires done, it should spread that flow of water back across the area up there so it's not just a stream.
And where is that called?
It would be actually right where the parking itself begins when you get right in there.
On Firefong Road?
No, on the, in terms of the park itself.
On the park itself?
Do we have any other business?
Mr. Chair, I was just thinking, since the issue about, um, the noise abatement that was the topic of the Act 250 hearing came up late this week. I was wondering if you and John have heard anything about the hearing recess order? Has there been any action taken by the Act 250 people, um, about that? Have they reached a ruling?
Have they reached a ruling, has it? I don't know. I don't know how it yet.
Could we ask Bill to please look into that?
I think there was, there was something from the state a month ago or so.
I, I, you two would have received.
Okay, well, I'll look into it.
If you would kindly ask Bill to get the status of that, either from the commissioner or, 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 that would be great.
Yeah, if there is, I'll have him submit it to the board.
Are you talking about cooperation?
Yeah.
Is that all okay?
That's what I thought. And I thought I saw it come down.
It's been okay. It's been over till but.
Yeah. So I would have needed that a couple of months back. So we'll look into it and then dig it out and send it again. Yeah. Any other business? If not, the next regular meeting, uh, is Monday, day seven here at 6:00 PM. Who may be?
I do.
Who seconded it?
I'll start.
Can she mention more?
Again, maybe. And who seconded it? I'm second.
Well, I'll bring the first up. I'll say has been due out of town.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.